This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:03 PM on August 25th, 2022. Roll call.
Jason Daley.
Ball through on Jason.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Yeah.
Dan McIntosh here. Mike Parsons.
Here.
Mayor's staff.
Also present. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mayor's report. The finding committee does still have a vacancy. Interested candidates should require at City Hall or contact myself. The deputy clerk vacancy has been filled. Welcome Melanie Crum to City Hall. I think Melanie was going to try to call in tonight during her time so she could say hello to all of you during the confirmation portion of the meeting. Property acquisition, the closing is scheduled for no later than August 31st, which is next week. Street improvements, hopefully all of you have seen Ananen Road down there. That is complete. There's no more potholes. It looks great. More streets. We'll see chip seal this summer. The county should be, we've got about one sixth of the spread of the city streets here in town are going to see a chip seal. Should start happening any day. Like Murphy Park, the park ward completed a live presentation to the state RCO grant board on August 23rd. This related to that presentation that they gave a month or two back. We should hear back in a week or so how we fared in the rankings with all everyone else in the state. That'll give us a good idea how likely it is we are to get that grant. And Transportation Improvement Board grant. The Transportation Improvement Board, for those of you that don't remember, is the state group that gives away a portion of the gas tax to cities that apply for it. We try to apply for it every single year. We applied for next summer, an amount of $34,000 for various street repairs. So hopefully we'll find out in November if we get that. Historically, we always get what we ask for. That's it for council reports. I swear there was something else I was going to say. I'll think of it. Council reports.
Is there a question? Chairman brought up saying about the gate blocking his way because it's on a city street. Is there any way to maybe cut down on the rhetoric to beat the thing? Because it is city property. If that was my place, I'd have pulled a pinstone already to get to my property.
So the city, so the portion of the street that is beyond the gate is an unmaintained city right of way. And so the only, the only, the only thing that's there is the gravel that the property owner has brought in. And so actually it is, it's an unsafe street. And so the city has, what comes down to it, the gate is city property. The gate's fully on the city right of way. So one could say that it's the city's gate. And the city can gate unsafe roads if it wants to. And so there's going to be more to come on that. Something a little bit more legal than that. And following up the attorney on that and then the property owner on how to make sure that we're doing everything correctly.
Right, because they had a concern about dogs too.
Right, so the concern of the neighbor was that the property owner that has the gate across the street, that particular property owner had dogs running around behind the gate. The concern was that if the property owner decided to go on this beyond the gate, the neighbor would go beyond the gate, that the dogs might bite him.
Right. Legitimate.
What, where's this?
So beyond F Street North. Past the swampland. You can't really see it from the highway. Anyway, it's an ongoing issue.
Other side of the field.
Yeah, it's on the other side of the highway. So the issue with the dogs that you brought up. Dogs run wild all the time. Dogs bite people. I don't say all the time. I didn't want to say dogs bite people on the city right of way all the time because they don't. But you know, the fact that, you know, it still wouldn't be the city's problem if one person went over next to someone else's house and got bitten by their dog. So someone still needs to keep dangerous dogs tied up. There's, there's more to this story. There's, there's feuds between the property owners as well as the fact that one property owner is just trying to do everything they can to antagonize the other.
Right.
So there's a lot of false claims going on.
I'm just saying that maybe at least get one of them kind of calm down.
We're working on it. Yeah, I actually just talked to the property owner today. Who wants to be harassed as the gate access to his property. We're working on something that could fix that and then they will be coming. But if something does come of it, it's going to have to come to City Council for approval.
Okay, just wanted to bring it up.
Yeah, you could talk to, talk to our sheriff about it as representative as well because he says firsthand knowledge. If you wanted some behind the scenes stuff later on, of course. It's all public record. Other council reports. How about your market?
Wanted to add along in the agenda for that.
Okay. Other council reports, okay. Moving on to agenda approval, we did have some changes on the agenda. I wrote them up for you in a wonderful. Now, you have additional additions beyond that.
For this.
Okay, what would that be?
About the market.
So adding a line number eight for the Vader. Vader, what are you calling it?
The Little Falls Market.
The Little Falls Market. Discussion.
Yeah, I'm going to revolt against the fee you're trying to give us to pay.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve this agenda with the following changes. Adding since a city council meeting minutes for July 28th, 2022. Adding vouchers. For amending the end of July 2022. Did you want me to read those numbers also? Okay, and beginning of August 2022 vouchers. Removing item number four and item number five. Resolutions 162022 and 152022. And adding number eight, Little Falls Market discussion.
I have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with the noted changes. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. McIntosh. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to minutes of approval.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the council meeting on August 11th, 2022.
And the change.
And the changes.
In July. In July minutes.
See the minutes. Okay, July 28th minutes of also.
We have a motion by Ms. McIntosh to approve the city council meetings for August 25th and July 28th. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Further discussion?
Oh.
Here you go, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of July 2022 at $16,131.97. The beginning of August 2022 at $179,111.5 and the end of August 2022 at $33,374.28 for a total August 2022, for a August total 2022 of $212,485.33.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd ask it.
We do not have any special reports tonight. Moving on to city business number one. Councils consider nomination or nominations for vacancy council position five with the term expiring near the end of November 2023 after the municipal election, election of that year is confirmed by the county, which generally happens just before Thanksgiving.
And it's 2023, not this November.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'll open the floor to nominations.
I would like to nominate Mike Ferguson.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to nominate Mike Ferguson. I believe Mike did submit a, an application for the position. So you all have that. You should have been able to read that. City has not gotten any other applications. Is that correct? No other applications solicited for number one meetings now. So unless someone else has, someone else, this would be the time to nominate such a person.
I second the motion.
Okay. Second, another second for Mr. Ferguson. Anyone want to interrogate Mr. Ferguson while he's, while he's here? Just a little bit?
What do you stand on, dog?
Where do you stand on pot-pelly bids?
Keep them fenced.
Okay. There are no other nominations. All those in favor of approving Mike Ferguson to City Council. We'll say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Confirmation. This is the hard part. This is where I try not to read so hard that you can't remember what I said.
Yes, he did it to me, so watch him.
But I also try not to do. Okay. I, Mike Ferguson, I, Mike Ferguson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution. And the laws of the state of Washington. And the Constitution and laws. Of the United States of America. And that I will faithfully and impartially. Perform and discharge the duties. Of the City Council of the City of Vader. According to law and the best of my ability.
Move the dollar. Like you might, yeah.
I said before the meeting started that Mike, that's why I was actually going to have vouchers sitting on the council and giving time for very. Michael. Those are for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Moving on to item number two, council to confirm deputy clerk Melanie Crum. You should all have in your packet Melanie's job offer. She actually started on earlier this week, so today was her fourth day, I believe. So Bart's coming to speed very well, very electric. She'll be great. Members, see both Diane, Kristen and Jason Daley participated in the interview process for Melanie. And they chose her out of several candidates. Melanie is online if someone wanted to like to talk there.
Hello.
Hi, Mary.
This is Ann. What are your qualifications?
Well, I have previous, like 10 plus years of previous experience in customer service and handling cash and finances for a large grocery chain. And yeah, those were the, like, that's some of my previous experience. But I'm more than willing and eager to learn the aspects of the job that I'm not terribly familiar with. But I feel like I'll do, I'll do you guys good.
You live in this area? This is Randy Hall.
Hello.
Hi. You, you live in this area now?
I do not live in Vader, but I am from the area originally.
Okay. Is that a good thing, Randy? I think so. Okay.
Thank you.
She's in the area.
People want to be outside of Vader. Well, there's no other discussion. I would recommend Melanie Crum for your confirmation.
I'll make a motion that we approve Melanie Crum's employment.
The motion, the vote, the confirmation. Deputy clerk Melanie Crum, do we have a second? Seconded by Mr.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Fair none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Melanie. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, council to consider agenda bill for the Keystone Branded Contract, the Warren Park Pavilion. Hopefully all the council members got the additional information. And on previous council meetings, there was some confusion over the design and scope of the pavilion. With the itemized invoices, you can see where the, where the full cost breakdown comes from as well as the email that was sent out today regarding the funding for the pavilion. Pavilion is coming in right around $47,000. The city has $30,000 for Transalta grant specifically for a pavilion. And also in the original RCO grant application, the city budgeted $17,000 for that, which is $47,000. So this pavilion is exactly what we budgeted for. Hopefully that clears it up as far as the design. And honestly, what the councils should be doing is not necessarily approving the design, but they, it's, the contract is what you're supposed to be reviewing and approving the contract language. Council already approved the pavilion and the original plan for the park. So this would be just for the contract.
Do you, you guys know this of the true person? I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Yeah, but most of Mr. Parsons to approve the Warren Park Pavilion. Is there a second? In the, in the invoice, the, remember, the structure is $23,000. The install, which includes pouring all the footers and building the structure, is $11,000. The standing seam metal roof is a little over $5,000. There is $750 for the engineer drawing standby Washington State engineer as well as sales tax. See if I forgot anything. I think that about covers it though. So the structures.
I think they have a copy in the invoice in their package.
There's that one. That's not the, that's not the itemized one.
This one?
Oh, I didn't see that. There it is, yeah. Yeah.
You seem to look at a cheaper version.
Don't. It is, it is not. We can probably just see from the, see from the bids for all the other various. Actually, I've got 30 emails today. Let's see.
Yeah, as a general contractor, I say that, that metal roofing is very conservative. You know, there's no, there's no additional charge or cost underneath just the material on there. So it's not.
So it would have been cheaper for the metal instead of chingles?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying their, their bid is spot on.
I'm in the business too, so that's, I do know a little about what I'm talking about. So I still think it's a little bit too much.
It's in there for 140 mile an hour winds.
Yeah.
Do we have that much wind here? I mean, besides me?
I would say, given that this building is going to be used in a commercial setting and a park, having, having it slightly overbuilt is better than the alternative. And we're also looking for something that's going to last a long time, right? Low maintenance, that old roof, you can't get less maintenance than that. You want something that's going to last a long time, we want the city to have the investment money.
What about the, the one we have already? Are they going to haul it all?
Nope, it's, it remains.
Wait a minute. We're going to pay $46,000 for a new pavilion. You're just repairing the old one and putting new stuff on it for $46,000.
No, we're going to have two pavilions out there.
Right. So this one is going to be in the center of the playground for a covered, for a covered shaded area. So people will be able to sit and hang out and picnic where the kids are playing. And then the other one on the side is going to be for non-playground related activities.
I think the other one was, I think we, when we built the original one that was out there, it was even more than this.
I don't know, we built the other.
I think it's going to be.
Think it would have been better to put some trees out there. For shade.
I think with the vinyl sleeve over the post, they're going to get vandalized because it's just like a vinyl fence with the kids. And, you know, I mean, not saying anything bad about the kids. It's just, they seem to do stuff, do stuff like that. So thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Jason, do you have any comment?
I don't. I looked at the plans and it looks like a very sturdy structure. I, I think it's going to be a, it'll be there for a long time.
Yeah, here's the itemized one. The pavilion structure is $23,000. It includes upgraded eight by eight posts. The roofing is 5,900. The upgraded post is the 1,400. The foundation is 5,000. And the kit install setup, foundation is 11,000. The subtotal of $2,000 gets us to the 42, 46. Any further discussion? Fair none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we removed items four and five. So moving on to item number six. Council to consider resolution, that's 15, 2022. Inter local agreement with the city of Winlock for site sewer inspection. Diana, you'll talk to that.
15 or 18?
The number is actually 15.
It's 15.
It was carried over from the media exploring this one.
Would I have been to talk to that? I appreciate that.
Yes. When a customer builds a house and there has never been sewer on that property, they connect to our sewer, what they, what they call a side sewer. And so our engineer writes the specifications about how it's supposed to be done. And then it needs to be inspected before they fill it in with the dirt. Now, in the past, we've asked our building inspector, he says he's not qualified to do that. We lean on John to do it. John is not real comfortable doing it because he says he's not qualified. So we reached out to Winlock and they have a public works director and I guess it's probably still a public work track, but he specializes in the sewers. So there's two of them that are qualified. And so Winlock is available for us to call on them when we need this kind of work done. So they, they've given us a rate in there. It's in that contract.
The black feed in them.
It's in there. I don't need to know. It's a physical mileage in it, not much mileage. The fact that the contract is for, and it says as we need it.
And of course, that fee will be part of the, the permit fee that the customer will pay. And hopefully they'll get a better product out of their inspection that way too. So make sure that whoever, whoever they hired to, to build their site sewer actually did the job that they were supposed to.
Not to open the can of worms, but if a property has a sewer line in it, but it has not been used. There was some question a couple of years, I think it was a year or so ago, that they need a whole new sewer line put in. But did we decide that that's not true? It just needs an inspection?
I'm going to reply to what we've been doing. And it's according to how old it is and if it is over the 1000 years, five years, something like that, then it can be inspected and see if it is worthy of being used and okay. If not, then we're going to actually allow it to be stopped.
Okay, yeah, so there's an option to narrow their line.
Okay.
And so these inspectors that we're having would be able to help us with that.
Shouldn't a $4,000 hookup fee paid for that? Side of the connection inspection?
Was that that?
The four thousand dollars is to actually access our sewer system. Um, the side sewer is five hundred dollars per unit, and yet costly to, um, inspectors.
Hear that, Bob?
So there's no out of pocket expenses for us, for us.
Correct, yeah, yeah. The city doesn't have any out of, out of pocket expenses.
For that inspection, is what you're saying?
That's correct, yeah. The inspection fee would, would be, um, billed back to the customer.
To, to the customer? And what's the, what's the cost to the customer?
What's the, what's the cost? It's in the, it's in the inter local agreement. It's around a hundred dollars or something. Hell, yeah, but it was a, it was a flat fee, wasn't it?
And eighty. Eighty-three fifty-seven and a point of six-two-five, sixty-five per mile. They'll come after hours. Hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, but that's minimal for hours.
So the, each inspection is eighty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. And, um, we'll reimburse Winlock for mileage as well for the drug, for them to come over here at sixty-two and a half cents per mile. And if they want to come in, if we want them to come inspect outside of normal work hours, uh, the cost is a hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-six per hour. It's very reasonable.
Yeah, well, if I had that for one.
So that'd be about, that'd be fourteen miles travel time?
Probably, yeah. So another seven dollars on top of the eighty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Thank you.
Yep.
Fifteen twenty-two.
Uh, it's a, it's a great solution for a problem we've had for a little while. Like I said, I think our residents get a, will get a better product out of it.
Awesome, super nice.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number fifteen twenty-two with the sewer inspection with the city of Winlock.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the inter local agreement with Winlock for the site sewer inspections. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm thinking that.
Further discussion? Care or none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the city council ordinance twenty-two, who are free the budgeting for the sewer outfall engineering and the additional community celebration expenses. So this will be admitting our budget. Obviously, in our original budget, uh, we didn't have the Fourth of July expenses on there. And, uh, also we have the upcoming, uh, the anticipated cost for the sewer, the sewer outfall engineering. Of course, we've got the ninety-four thousand dollar grant from the county. That document is in the works of being, uh, finalized. But, uh, the remainder of the engineering costs will need to come from Vader funds. Budget amendment will satisfy that. There are, obviously, we did remove a couple of items from the business, city business, be the civil west agreement for the outfall services, uh, at, as well as the Lewis County Grant Agreement. Like I said, both of those are in the works. They would, they would be two out of the three items needed to fully get the outfall project going. Budget amendment is one of the, one of the three.
So we should avoid devoting that and get the other stuff?
Uh, it, it, it does not hurt to do it at all. It does not necessarily commit us to spending the money. We can always adjust the budget, um, if necessary afterwards.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-two dash zero-three, the budget amendment, budget amendment for sewer outfall engineering and additional community celebration expenses.
Do you have a motion with Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance twenty-two zero-three, the budget amendment? Do we have a second? Further discussion? Care or no? Further discussion? All those in favor for approving ordinance twenty-two zero-three, the budget amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Wait.
Uh, moving on to item number eight, um, Ms. Pat Katsch would like to discuss, um, the Little Falls market fees.
Yes, I would like to discuss this. This is for the community. And you're all charging us fees. Why are you charging something for the community? You didn't charge for Fourth of July? May Day, did you? Yes. We're starting out to bring more people in and, uh, get better, uh, more on the map, get more vendors in. I think you can relax the, the fees, uh, till we get it started. Because most of these people, they're not, they're not, uh, corporations, they're hobbyists. And they don't have, uh, the business fees, licenses or whatever else. And I don't think it's wrong.
So what, what are the, you know, I, I haven't heard since, like, we had some initial discussion. What were the, what were the fees that were needed?
Ten dollars a person or fifty dollars for how many years? A year?
And is that a, that's a state business license?
It, it is a temporary business license, as you guys see. Um, it is required. Uh, in town, there are vendors in town that are doing something out there. They're also required, they have a business license. Um, and I consulted with a talent Toledo, because I know they have a market that's been successful. And she also told me that yes, maybe you require the ten dollar temporary fee for each event, um, for events. However, like we were discussing, everyone's going to be there for five weeks. They could go and get an annual permit for the city and hold it, hold the whole event from September to December, is that right? Yes. So all those weeks. It's on private property. I'm not on city property, right? So.
But you're still.
Again.
You're still selling in the city limits and.
And you can't relax the fees, uh, for, you know, a couple of months to, so we could get started?
Is that a city fee or is it a state fee?
And it's real city fee, right? Because I did a lot of research, we remember, you know, um, May Day was on private property as well. They also paid the membership fees. They also block all streets too. We're not blocking all streets. We're on, on private property. Uh, I have about four or five dugouts going to be there. They're hobbyists, they're, they're not, uh, licensed vendors. And I just think it's unfair. One trying to build up the community. Everybody's honoring, just do this for the community, just do it for the community. I'm trying to do something for the community, not really penalize it.
Well, I mean, it's.
Well, it's not you. It's the vendor that has to pay the ten dollars.
Doesn't matter. I'm.
Work with her.
And I'm trying to do what's right for them.
That's a question. If it's a market, then that's, that'd be like a regular business license. I have to pay for the city business license, right?
This is going to be one of the.
Wouldn't have to be every entity in, in. Everybody there has to. Is this in a commercial or residential area?
And people are allowed to have a yard sale without a business license, but no more than.
Or a few hours a day.
Hey, Bob, we're, the council's having a discussion.
So, I mean, that's how the code is written, and so I'm required by. Right, right. You guys do whatever. It's fun here to try and negotiate.
So what are some alternatives that we could do maybe? I don't know, perhaps the city could, maybe the city could pay the fee somehow.
I was just asking, maybe let it slide for a couple of months so we can get our, get it going. And then, after a certain amount of time, grace period, if you, you know, then charge.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing you. I'm not against you on it.
Okay.
How many vendors are there?
Careful, hold on a second. We need, I say, I don't, we need to stay legal.
Right.
Right? And we can't just not, just say, wave, wave our hand and say, we're not going to charge these fees.
Right.
And just let it go. That would be right. We need to find a legal way to do it.
Okay.
Whether it would be, could be, maybe the city could somehow set some money aside for, I don't, a special event, we can make sure it's okay. City could pay those fees initially somehow, um.
Would you be willing to pass it?
Could be a way.
At least.
I'm willing to do anything if we can find a legal way to do it.
Right. If we can even pass it, that's, you know, for at least a couple of months.
And I don't want to speak for the rest of the city council.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how the rest of the, the, the city council feels, but getting a, a new potential draw to the city going, I mean, I can see the allure to that.
Yes, and I, I have.
Trying to make it as easy as possible.
Yeah. I would say also, you really have to think about, they have to have a business license. It can't just be vendors selling at home. That's a yard sale. And that's what we are, basically. We are basically a yard sale. Okay, you can do a yard sale. We're coming here with no fee. Okay, so.
Yeah, we can't waive a state business license fee.
Right.
If a state, if a state business license fee is required, you know, you got to follow them. Um, but let's, let's find a way that you can do it. Like I was just saying.
It's four weeks to.
You can do, you can do it four times, follow the yard sale.
Right.
And being the third, it won't be anything.
And you're having to make three fees.
I'll do that. See how it goes. Then I may be back to negotiate some more.
Yeah, and like I said, we're not opposed to it. And I guess in that amount of time, we can actually work on an alternative, figure out a way to, to legally, uh, get this thing off the ground.
Right.
I know it's a relatively small amount, ten dollars, but I suppose there are days when they might not make even ten dollars.
That's right. That, I've had people say, you know, sometimes it's not worth it. Said no. But if I can draw more in, with money, let's do this.
Okay.
I mean, you could set it up where you had once a month, you had the yard sale event, and you didn't have to pay. Right. And then the other ones would be for the businesses that have license. Right.
Oh, yeah. Two different kinds of events that you're having. One is the no license event.
Right.
Once a month, and then the other three are licensed events.
So for all I got is these, like I said, hobbies, those other stuff on taxes. It's not something where you can go to Walmart sometimes. What you do, you go to the wrong Walmart. If they sell a list, you can.
They should have a.
Have a business license? No.
If the DLR gets a hold of you, you are.
Yeah, they do, they do need to be careful. I know that the IRS is working on different ways of tracking all of that. If you sell more than five hundred dollars on eBay, for instance, it automatically gets reported to the IRS and they're going to want their tax.
We understand that most of it's like two dollars still, maybe the most ten.
Yeah, I know, times change.
Right. Well, yeah, but they're bombing up now too, so.
All right, so, so it sounds like.
I'll just offer my, my, uh, idea about the yard sale that's been outlined, but in case I am not exactly right, we collapse for that as far as four times, three times. Right.
Yeah, sounds, sounds right. You're having a, you know, if you're doing it on private property, that person's having a, having a yard sale and they're inviting their friends over. Also have a combined, combined yard sale. That sounds like a very legitimate thing to do.
Okay.
And so we can start with that, and then we'll research a way that the city can help for the first year, help, help this thing off the ground.
Right. Because I, I want to, I want this to grow.
Yeah, sure. I think we, we all do. Just got to do it the way it doesn't get anyone in trouble.
Right, especially me.
All right. Hey, there are comments on this? No? Uh, I want to do, Mr., uh, Jason, do you have any comments on this?
I, I don't know. I was kind of curious as to what day she was thinking about having it on.
It's every day, can do it.
Oh, okay. I was just curious. It'd be great.
Sure. Uh, moving on to public comment. Do any members of the public have comments? Right, hearing none? Elected official comment? Any elected officials have comments?
Nope.
Uh, this meeting is adjourned at six forty-seven P M.